This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stacy Yarborough. Welcome to the special town meeting for the Town of North Haven. Pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Section 901 and Section 903, the special town meeting will now come to order. Again, my name is Stacy Yarborough. I'm the Town Clerk and the Tax Collector for the Town of North Haven. I want to reference quickly, since a lot of you weren't here, that there was a public hearing with regard to Agenda Item Number One previously. That was with regard to the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, which was required by state law to be held prior to this special town meeting. Now, before we can continue with the special town meeting, we do have to elect a moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by members of our meeting. It's the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting, while ensuring the rights of individual voters who wish to be heard. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of the meeting who seeks clarification with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on any issue tonight, be it the moderator or any of the items on the agenda, you must be an elector of our town to cast a vote. To be an elector of the town, the following is required: The person wishing to vote must have been a registered voter in the town at the time of the most recent election, or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list; a citizen of the United States, and lastly, 18 years of age or older. If you're not sure if you're an elector, if you're not 100% clear, I do have the information here with me, and you can check with me. Please be advised that all of these regulations will be in force for all votes taken this evening. I'm going to open the floor now, and I'd like to seek nominations for meeting moderator. I have a nomination for Teresa Rensialo-Villi. Is there a second? Are there any other nominations for meeting moderator? Hearing none, I will now put it to a vote. All in favor of Teresa Rensialo-Villi as tonight's special town meeting moderator? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? I now declare Teresa Rensialo-Villi the meeting moderator for the special town meeting tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Do I hear a second? Yeah. Um, do I hear? Okay, there's a, there's a motion and a second. Do, all in favor of moving the items, signify by saying aye. All opposed? You need to look at the agenda in front of you, and it has to do with moving... Okay. Let me ask, yeah, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna ask Jennifer Capola, Town Attorney, to get up here, um, or to make a statement right now.
Attorney Lambert has made a motion to amend the order of the items on the agenda, to make item number six, which is the supernumerary ordinance, the first item for your consideration, and then to make item number five, which is the appropriation for the supernumerary program, item number two for your consideration. That is the motion, and that motion has been seconded. That is what you're voting on, and I suggest that the moderator, now that it's been explained to the special town meeting, that the moderator please take another voice vote. All in favor and all opposed.
All in favor of moving the items, signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, this passes. We will now go on, but before this meeting starts, I want to set a few ground rules. Civility will reign in this room tonight. I will ask that people limit to five minutes to their speaking. If you want to speak again, you will wait until everybody else speaks. You will not direct any questions or insults to each other, please, and you can direct everything up here, and we'll get through this meeting tonight. Thank you. Town Clerk?
The agenda is the procedural legal document that's filed to tell everyone who comes to a meeting what's going to be done at a meeting. And so, that agenda, that notice, that notice of a meeting was filed, and this is what it contained. Having received appropriate written notice and warning of the special town meeting and posted the same, I hereby convene the special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 7-6 for the purpose of considering and voting upon the following items. Number six: To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an ordinance at Chapter 163 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program, Public School Supernumerary, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the public schools in the Town of North Haven. Number five: To consider and vote upon recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate from the unappropriated fund balance a sum not to exceed $220,000 for the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumeracy Program to be established by ordinance at Chapter 163 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the elementary schools and middle school in the Town of North Haven. Number one: To consider and vote upon whether to approve certain requested programs in accordance with the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. This year, the applicants are the Moriarty Hall Energy Conservation Improvements Program, submitted by Landcraft Fife and Drum Corps, and the Churches of North Haven Food Pantry Program, submitted by the North Haven Congregational Church. Number two: To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt amendments to the Code of Ethics at Chapter 30 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven. Number three: To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an ordinance prohibiting wastes generated from gas and oil drilling and extraction activities, hydraulic fracturing waste, at Chapter 130 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to prohibit the use, storage, disposal, sale, acquisition, transfer, handling, treatment, and/or processing of waste from natural gas or oil extraction within the Town of North Haven as set forth therein to protect the health, safety, welfare, and property of the public. And number four: To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an illicit discharge in connection to storm water drainage systems ordinance at Chapter 133 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish the methods for controlling the introduction of pollutants into the municipal separate storm sewer system to comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System Permit Process.
This agenda item relates to a new ordinance that may need some amending before it moves forward for a vote. Further, we may need to table a vote on number six till we have a vote on number five. However, right now, we're entertaining discussion. First Electman Frida?
Thank you very much, and welcome to tonight's town meeting. I appreciate the attendance that we see here this evening. Tonight is the first part of a two-phased plan that I'd like to unveil to the Town of North Haven in an effort to enhance school security. Several weeks back, the Board of Police Commissioners headed by Chairman Joseph DiErico, our Police Chief Tom McLaughlin, and our Deputy Chief John Mohearn collaborated on a plan that I was most interested in. And that plan was to try to implement, with the Town's approval, school resource officers in all of our schools. As a point of reference, we have already a school resource officer in the high school, and occasionally that resource officer will go back and forth to the middle school and the high school. So tonight, I'd like to present the first phase, which is on the agenda, what it would look like with school resource officers here in North Haven in all of our schools. So the first slide you see here is where will the school resource officers be placed? They would be placed at Green Acres, Monowice, Clintonville, and Ridge Road Schools. There would also be an additional officer at the middle school to support the existing officer in the high school. So we're proposing tonight adding five school resource officers, which would complete an SRO process in all of our schools. What would be the responsibilities of the SROs? Well, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, you see that there's a proposed ordinance. That ordinance mirrors the school resource officer's responsibilities at the high school. Tonight, as I take you through these slides, based on some input from Superintendent Bob Cronin, I'm going to be proposing that we consider amending the ordinance that you see to incorporate some of the feedback we receive from Superintendent Cronin, Dr. Cronin, and some of the members of the Board of Ed in terms of the faculty and the administration. The purpose of this program that I'm presenting tonight is to enhance the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the students enrolled at the public school systems in the Town of North Haven. With what we've seen over the past several years, I believe that the timing is right to incorporate this process into our school system. We must consider that our children are our most precious possessions, assets, and belongings. They are the future of our communities and the future generations that will be among the leaders in business, government, and any other industry. We must do everything we can to protect our children. What would the responsibilities be of the SRO? There'll be uniform supernumeraries that'll be deployed to provide daily security within the North Haven public schools when school is in session. They will be visible at all times. They will monitor morning and afternoon bus ramp and parent guardian drop-off locations, and they'll monitor visitors to the schools. These three items in red are part of the ordinance that you see tonight. Based on some of the feedback again from our Superintendent Dr. Cronin, a man whom I work very closely with, we're proposing that D, E, and F be amended ordinance tonight. And the D, E, and F would be, as you see, monitor student hallway traffic, monitor cafeteria areas during lunch, and monitor outside student activity. The responsibilities of the SRO would include patrolling the exterior perimeter of the schools, patrolling the interior of the schools, and receive, document, and investigate minor complaints within the school system. Item J was another recommendation from Superintendent Bob Cronin. This is part of the ordinance you see here tonight before you, and part of a proposed amended ordinance that I would ask for your consideration, to remove item J. Item K, as part of what we're proposing tonight, assist school officials with conferences as may be requested and appropriate, and coach and mentor youths when appropriate. Why are we bringing this to a town meeting? By Town Charter, the town meeting is the legislative body of the town. The town meeting encourages and precipitates a community discussion, and by having it tonight at a town meeting, our forefathers years ago incorporated this into the Town Charter. We're in total compliance with the Town Charter by doing it at a town meeting. I want to address why perhaps we didn't discuss this during the budget season. Well, there were several reasons. We had already been at least halfway to two-thirds of the way through our budget season before we even received the presentation from our police commissioners, Chairman DiErico, Chief McLaughlin, and Deputy Chief Mohearn. There were several issues that Ed Swinkowski and I had to work with our town attorneys behind the scenes. We had to reconcile possible pension issues, because part of this, and you'll see this shortly, is that some of our current North Haven police officers may consider retiring to take these SRO positions. So we needed to work out an agreement, an agreement with the police union to ensure that we were offering these SROs to our union members first for their first right of approval, and then, of course, the complexities of putting together an ordinance. And at that time, during the school budget season, even though Point 1, 2, and 3 are the prevailing points here, there was an uncertainty in terms of what the state revenue would be at that particular point in time. I want to address how is this going to be funded? We're asking for an appropriation that was already unanimously approved by the Board of Finance for $220,000 out of our fund balance. North Haven is financially very strong right now. We continue to be AAA rated. We have healthy reserves. So we're asking for an appropriation of $220,000. It will be taken out of the fund balance, but then we will replenish the fund balance because we're projecting a surplus in the fiscal year ending June 30th. And during this past fiscal year, the one that's concluding on June 30th, we worked very hard on a line-by-line item basis to watch every expenditure, to not replace positions right away, to hold off on expenditures. Hence, that will help us deliver a surplus to replenish the fund balance and the appropriation, the appropriation that we are asking for tonight. Now, even though the request is $220,000, there's about $16,000 in payroll taxes that will be on top of the $220,000 that we, myself, Ed Swinkowski, and the Board of Finance can effectively manage through the payroll tax item in the existing budget. So, $220,000 is the requested appropriation. How will this be funded in the future? This will be part of a budgetary process every year, starting with next year's budget. So we will build this in to the budgets in subsequent years. What will this represent? It represents approximately 2/10ths of 1% of our annual budget to help enhance the safety of our children. 2/10ths of 1%. What will the compensation and benefits be that the SROs will be potentially receiving? There'll be straight compensation at a prevailing grade D recruit pay rate for the hours worked. That's a grade within the police department. That equates to, ladies and gentlemen, $33.05 an hour. There will be no other benefits, absent of any workman's compensation issues that would have to be provided by law. School vacations, holidays, snow days are not workdays. This program is designed to mirror the existing school season in terms of days and hours during the day. So who could potentially become SROs? The supernumeraries, or SROs, will be appointed in accordance with the general orders of the North Haven Police Department, and must be Connecticut-certified police officers in accordance with the general state statutes, Section 7-294D. Now, they may include qualified North Haven retired officers, some of whom, as I referenced earlier, may be interested in retiring from our existing police department and taking the SRO position. And those that are considering that are all well-recognized policemen who are faces of the North Haven community with the fine way they represent our police department, like every single policeman in town does. I'm very proud of this North Haven Police Department. So what we're asking for tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is an approval to help enhance the safety of our children. This is the first phase. Later in the year, thanks to Bob Cronin and the staff at the school system, they presented to me a plan to upgrade the infrastructure in the elementary schools, many of whom are 60 years old. The middle school is in total compliance, thanks to the great efforts of our town attorneys and the building committee in getting us into state compliance, and thanks to the efforts of our state representatives for providing us the reimbursement. So the middle school is in total compliance with the safety standards that are designated by the state. And we would need to also enhance the high school, which was completed in 2005. So later in the year, I'll be presenting that. Tonight is the discussion on the school resource officers. I hope, ladies and gentlemen, that you would agree with me that we're at a point in time where we need to do everything we can to enhance our precious assets, our precious children, to ensure the safety of our children, our teachers, our principals, and our faculty members throughout the school system. Thank you very much for your time.
We have a proposal to amend this item. Is there a motion to amend? Second? Okay, I'm opening this up for discussion. Is there anyone who would like to discuss? Ms. Buemi? Excuse me, I need to put the glasses on.
Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom Drive. I'm so happy to see so many people here tonight. This is obviously a very important issue that many of us are concerned about. I just want to clarify one thing that First Electman said. Items D, E, and F are also being removed?
Items D, E, F, and J.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that because the First Electman will know those were the four that I had serious concerns with at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And I just want to clarify, the uniformed police officers are going to be armed, is that correct? So they will be armed. Very quickly, I want to address the budgetary issue. You know, I, as I said in the Board of Selectmen meeting and at the Board of Finance meeting on June 14th, I felt that this should have been in our regular budgetary process. I heard the First Electman's explanations, but let's face it, folks, school security is not a new issue. Columbine was almost 20 years ago. The shock of Sandy Hook, which we all remember and none of us will ever fully recover from, was six years ago. This was discussed at a Board of Ed meeting in March. The First Electman said it was only discussed a few weeks ago by the Police Chief and the Chairman of the Police Commission, and, you know, I think it was discussed well before, and I think it should have been part of our regular budgetary process.
Third Selectman Buemi?
Yes.
This, this section is to discuss the amendment, the items that are going to be amended?
Right.
So, do, I mean, I think that what you're talking about should probably happen after the discussion, after we decide to do it.
Oh, I thought we already voted on the amendment. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Well, remember what I just said, because I'll be right back up here in a minute. I fully support the amendments, excuse me.
Thank you.
I was responding to all of what Mr. Frida said. Thank you for pointing out the parliamentary process, and shame on me for not knowing that. I fully support the four items being removed. They were four items that I advocated that be removed back on June 14th, and I'll give my comments after the vote, and we, and the moderator calls for comments on items 5 and 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the amendment? Yes, Ms. White.
Mary White Summerlane, I am not in favor of removing the language about monitoring the hallways during passing, monitoring the cafeteria during lunch waves, and monitoring outside school activities, say recess. We want the SROs where the children gather in large groups because historically speaking, shooters look to fire their weapons at large groups. I have some examples that I'd like to give to support that. Do I give it now or later?
I would probably give it later when we actually get into discussion about the other most...
Oh, thank you. All right, thanks.
Yes? Anita Anderson.
Good evening. I'm Anita Anderson, 32 Sheffield Road, North Haven. I'm current Board of Education chairperson. I have one question, and I'm just gonna hope you can hear me move out of the light. Right now, when I look at our ordinance, I look at it as a work in progress because a lot of this is going to be new to our elementary schools. My question... Pardon me?
Speak up. Yeah, lower the microphone a little bit.
Dark Girl Syndrome. So this is our ordinance, and it will be new to the elementary schools, and I'm considering it a work in progress. So what my question to you, Mr. Frida, is if we need to amend this as we go through the summer and have more dialogue within the Board of Ed, within your office, within the police department, are we allowed to do that without having to come to a town meeting?
I think I'm gonna direct that question to Town Attorney Capola.
You cannot amend the ordinance language without coming back to the town meeting. I think, though, that there is intended to be another town meeting before the school year starts. Is that not correct? I thought there were a couple of other items.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Cronin or First Electman Frida to come up and answer that. Please, you can come up here.
Good evening, everyone. It wasn't that I was suggesting that we didn't want the school resource officer in the hallways or in the cafeteria or on the playgrounds, but we have school personnel who are on duty during all of those times. So I didn't want it to be felt that there would always be the resource officer present in those situations. Do I want the resource officer going into the cafeteria and talking with students? I absolutely do. Do I want them on the playground, talking with kids? At the middle school, where they pass differently than they do in the elementary school, of course, we want them there. But I didn't want it to be interpreted that they were just going to be the person in charge of all of those areas. So that was my explanation.
Thank you. Let me stay for a second. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, or are there any other questions for Dr. Cronin while he's up here? Oh, I'm sorry, right here, the front.
I'm Fritz Wittger, two-ninety Spring Road. At last, I have the opportunity to agree with Ms. White. This has never happened before in the history of time and space. In the extremely unlikely event that I would ever support this massive spend-a-thon, I would do so with the provision that these supernumerary gentlemen were all over the school at all times, doing everything they possibly can, because my idea of school safety is probably somewhat more broad than we're going to be discussing tonight. So I support all of these retracted, supposedly retracted items be left exactly where they are, and if you have resource people already performing these tasks, this begs a gigantic question. What do we need an extra person for? I, myself, am totally in the dark as to what the present person we have at the high school does. I admit ignorance as to what these other people are supposed to do. I'm getting the idea that this is some kind of reaction against school shootings. If that's the reason that he's there, then, of course, we should have him at the perimeter for six hours a day. If there are other reasons, and I would certainly hope there would be, I would expect that this person would be roaming the school with all his might.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Mulligan.
Hi, Ellie Mulligan, Seven State Street. I am a teacher in this district. I'm a teacher at the middle school. I can tell you Officer DeCoco runs back and forth between the high school and the middle school, how important it is to have somebody at every single school to help out. I have two kids in the system and one that will be coming up. My kids are not perfect. The officers are busy dealing with all different levels of things, and I do not think that any language should be taken out. I think it is especially important in our transition hallways, cafeteria, all that stuff. That's where most of the things that are going to occur and have occurred happen, is in the hallways. It's not happening so much in the classroom where the teacher is teaching. It's happening all over the school. So I am not in favor of taking anything of that language out of there. I believe it's very important that the officer is seen everywhere in the building. Thank you.
Again, please understand, I'm not suggesting that I don't want the school resource officer in those areas. The word that concerned me there was monitoring, because that would suggest to me that they're in that spot the entire time that students are in the cafeteria, or they're in that spot the entire time students are on the playground, and there could be many other things happening in the building which require their attention. That is all I meant by my reservations. It really is with the word "monitor." If there's another way in which we can include that and include those items, by all means, I would certainly be in favor of that.
Is there anyone else who would like to... Yes, sir.
Jim Clark from one-eleven Hartley Street. It's now been clarified, but I think the First Selectman misspoke, because he said there, these four things were being added. They're actually, the amendment is to take D, E, F, and J out?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, and I agree with that, in part, because if the purpose of this is really to respond to school shootings, we don't want to have, as the superintendent said, we don't want to have the police officer, resource officer, hanging around in the hallways when the threat we're talking about addressing is going to be external, or at least at the place where someone enters the building. So I'm in favor of the amendment, now that I understand that it's...
Okay, I'm going to ask...
And a subtraction, not an addition.
Okay, First Selectman will clarify.
Jim, if I could just ask you, I didn't quite hear what you had said, but the four, the items in red were proposed tonight for consideration to be removed based on the feedback from Superintendent Cronin. So we've heard a variety of different opinions here. So what I was proposing for consideration to support the feedback we receive from the man who runs the school system, to remove those items. Now, it's going to be coming to a vote here shortly. So I just wanted to clarify that I supported Bob Cronin's request to have them removed.
Right, and as the discussion went on, I understood that. But several of us thought that you had said these were, that the red things were being added to the original thing.
No, no, no.
So I'm with both of you on that.
Okay, thank you.
And as a former prosecutor, I don't think we need more police in the schools doing police work. You know, resource officers obviously do other things that are more social work, but if we're trying to add safety to the national problem that we have, they need to be mostly on the perimeter, protecting that perimeter, in my opinion.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Okay, so I'm going to just try to click... To speak to this item. Come on up.
Brian Testa, Maple Avenue. So if you have a problem with the wording of D, E, and F, the word "monitor," why can't you incorporate them into A without the word "monitoring," where he is visible, he or she, visible at all times? Because to me, if you don't incorporate it onto that, eliminating that word, you're going to handcuff this resource officer. So I understand your word, the word "monitor" with all the PC world out there, but is there a way you can incorporate those three into the one and kind of satisfy your concerns and along with other concerns and not be so handcuffed with our officers?
I'll let Dr. Cronin, and then I will ask Attorney Capola.
Actually, that, in reviewing the proposal initially, it seemed to me that all of those responsibilities were included in the other items on the job description. So it isn't, again, it is not that I'm saying I don't want them to do those things. I simply don't want them to feel as though when the building is, when there are students in the cafeteria at lunch, that the officer has to be there. If he or she can be there, that's wonderful. The same thing with the playground, but they need to be visible around the building throughout the day and not sort of handcuffed to those specific times. That's what I meant by my comments.
Attorney Capola, could you please address Mr. Testa's question/suggestion?
Ultimately, I'm not a voting member of the town meeting, but I will just comment and follow up to what Superintendent Cronin's comments just were. If you, again, do look at the general duties that are enumerated, it indicates that they're duties that will be included but not be limited to. And in terms of what you specifically spoke to, I mean, there is patrol the interior of the schools. So ultimately, to say monitor student hallway traffic, monitor cafeteria areas during lunch, monitor outside student activity, you've got that patrol the interior of the schools, and you also, as he indicated, you have subpart A that indicates be visible at all times. So there are other provisions within the duties that are indicated. I am in agreement with that statement. That seems to cover those monitoring aspects.
Thank you very much. Is there any more discussion before we move this to a vote? And this is only to discuss these items.
Yes, my name is Joma Jacob for Bradley Street. About, I wanted to know about, touch on this gentleman's talk, about monitoring. God forbid if there is a situation, what kind of authority does this officer have? Does he...
Well, I think that...
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, but that's going to be discussed after we decide about amending it or not, then when we get into the section about discussion of the officer's duties. I mean, I can maybe have it addressed now, but right now, we're just trying to figure out if we're going to keep all of those, or we're going to take D, E, F, and J out. And then we're going to have further discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Katz.
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive, for Jennifer. The word "monitor," does that mean, at some point, if you leave that in, does that mean at some point a parent or a student could say, "We don't want the police officer in here because we don't have to have a monitor"? I think this SRO should have the full scope of the school. Someone talked about the perimeter. Well, kids get into the school. They don't need to get through the perimeter. They walk through the perimeter as a student. So it's not like someone's coming up with an armored car that's going to attack the school. These kids get into the school, these offenders get into the school along with the rest of the kids. So my question is, if you take the word "monitor" out, would that solve the problem?
Go ahead, Attorney Capola, if you want to answer that.
You're speaking to taking the word "monitor" out of D, E, and F, and we do have be visible at all times. We have patrol the exterior perimeter, and we have patrol the interior. The interior includes the hallway traffic, includes the cafeteria areas during lunch, includes the outside student activity. I don't know if perhaps the chief would like to come and speak to these items, because I know that these were items that were discussed through the police department in terms of adding the duties, and they do. I think it is included correctly in the general orders that would be applicable for the supernumerary.
Chief McLaughlin.
All right, good evening. Before I answer that one real quick to the gentleman, I'll answer that question now. As the moderator had mentioned, the officer will be a sworn police officer. He'll have all duties as any other police officer in town does. So you will have a police officer on campus, period. That's it. As far as the wording, I think the wording that you're talking about removing is covered by the other articles there or the list of duties. So, you know, we use a terminology in our business when we talk about patrol functions, and we try to be omnipresent. We always like to be always present. And in that respect, and I think even at the Board of Selectmen meeting, Third Selectwoman Buemi had said, "Jesus, it looks like this person has so many duties that there was concern about the security itself." That's the nature of our work. There's nothing that we don't do, for the most part. We even put out fires on occasion, and that's what we're going to do. If this thing, if this flies, the officer will be there, he will be present, and you will think you have two people in that building. Nobody's going to be sitting on their duff. They're going to be tasked with a very, very important job of providing security to the schools and the students, the staff. And as I said at the selectmen's meeting, when you take your kids out to the bus stop, you want them to come home, and that's what this is all about. So to move a couple words around is not, it's inconsequential to me because it's covered in other language.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the amendment of this regulation, opposed Seeing no hands, we need to call the question. All in favor of amending items D, E, F, and J? Please signify by saying "I." Opposed? Motion passes. The town clerk will now read item number six of the agenda again tonight, just to be clear.
Thank you, everyone, for being patient. I know it's kind of convoluted. So just for clarification, I'm going to reread number six, and it'll be an open discussion on the item itself, not the amendment is done now, so it's the actual item. Excuse me. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an ordinance at chapter one-sixty-three of the ordinances of the town of North Haven to establish the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program, Public School Supernumerary, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled to the public schools in the town of North Haven.
Thank you. And I'm going to call on Third Selectman Buemi to now finish her present, her discussion items.
Thank you. Sally Buemi, I'm still at five Blossom Drive. Sorry for the confusion before. Well, again, I thought it should have been part of the budgetary process, but it wasn't, so let's move forward on the issue of whether we want armed security guards in our schools. And I generally support Mr. Frida's initiative or this administration's initiative. I think this is the world that we live in, unfortunately, folks, as I alluded to before with Columbine and Sandy Hook. We don't want, God forbid, and I mean, God forbid, something like that happen here in our town. So I am generally, I am supportive of having armed security guards, supernumeraries, which is a word I have trouble pronouncing, security officers in our schools. I do have some questions about it. First of all, I know that there's going to be some folks coming up here tonight that might be concerned about police officers, especially in the elementary schools, you know, armed, you know, armed uniformed police officers in a police state, and I understand that concern. I think it's outweighed by the need for school security because of all of the school shootings that we've had, but I do understand that. But I'd like to ask the chief a question, which I didn't really think of at the Board of Selectmen meeting, which is the fact that they're uniformed. Is it possible that they could be in plainclothes? And the reason I ask that is kind of twofold. One, you know, if we have, God forbid, an intruder come, an armed intruder come to one of our schools with the intent of harming the occupants of our school, maybe do we want the officer to be, to stick out and be uniformed? Maybe being in plainclothes with a concealed weapon might strategically be better. It's just an idea, folks. This is a town meeting. We're here to talk about this and think about this. I support the idea, don't get me wrong. I'm just thinking, maybe plainclothes might be better than uniformed. Another reason I think that, especially from the eyes of the elementary school kids, some of them might look at a uniformed officer and say, "Oh, great, there's a police officer," you know, and feel safer. Others might think, "There's a police officer. Wow, this must be a dangerous place." None of us really know how all of the kids might react to this. So from a psychological standpoint for the elementary school kids, and from a strategic standpoint, what do you think about possibly them being... standpoint, what do you think about possibly them being in plain clothes rather than uniformed?
Chief?
Okay, I, I would be opposed to putting any police officer in plain clothes in any of the schools for a couple of reasons. You know, number one, it's a deterrent right from the get-go. People are going to identify him as a police officer and, and they'll, they're going to, they're going to knock things down a couple of notches right from the get-go. Number two, if any of the students or any of the staff need to find the officer, he's in uniform. He's not going to mix in with any of the, either the student population or the faculty. God forbid you do have an incident and you have to call for help. You're going to get mutual aid, you're going to get response from other towns, and you'll, our first response will likely be from Hamden and Wallingford. And if Hamden and Wallingford come, they need to identify who the other police officers are. You can't have, you know, cop-on-cop things where, where things will go worse. So I could go into a school and I can identify my SRO because I know them, but a Hamden police officer or a Wallingford police officer coming in to help us under mutual aid might identify that person as, as a potential intruder. And then we, then we have even more problems. So uniforms have to be, they're, they're a must. They're, they're a must. And, and as far as the, you know, a gun issue or anything else, you know, most of us, you know, when we have little kids and we go to the, we go to the bookstore and we, and we buy them their first golden book, and a lot of times there, there are stories about, you know, people in the community and firemen and policemen and schoolteachers and, and, you know, and fire trucks and police cars and dump trucks from the highway garage. Every one of us should be telling our kids that the cops are good people. These are people you should- These are, these, these officers are in uniform and these are the people that we want our children to gravitate to. And we don't want them to be afraid of us. We want them to respect us. We want to respect them. And we want, again, we want everybody to be whole.
Well, I thought that was an excellent answer, Chief. I hold our police chief, Tom McLaughlin, in the highest regard. Again, asking a question doesn't mean you're against the police. I, I, I asked it because, you know, I, I thought about perhaps a uniformed officer's sticking out to a possible intruder. That, that's the only reason, but I think you've given good reasons, Tom, Chief McLaughlin, and I, I fully support that. So I'm satisfied with that answer. Another concern that I have is, I, I think that if, hopefully we will put this program into effect tonight because I do believe in it. Unfortunately, we need this in the world that we live in. But I think that we have to be careful to have some sort of educational process for the students and the teachers because I, I fear that we could have a false sense of security once we have this officer there. I mean, we always hear these ads on TV, you know, "If you see something, say something." And we want our kids to still be alert to their surroundings and not think, "Well, we've got this, this uniformed officer protecting us, so everything must be okay." So I think that it would be incumbent upon the superintendent and the administrators to have some sort of presentation to the schools explaining this process and that it by no means should lessen them paying attention to their surroundings. So perhaps the superintendent could address that when, when I complete my, my comments. And my, my last comment is sort of related to that, which is, I, I really think that the Board of Ed should be a bit more engaged in this process, which is sort of in line with what Chairman Anderson said earlier about the possibility of amending this. Because I, I believe that the Board of Ed, and I'll be, there's a lot of Board of Ed members here, and I'll be very interested to hear what they have to say because I think that they should be a little bit more involved in this process and the qualifications and the duties and how this will be implemented and effectuated in our, in our school system. So those are the concerns that I have. I support the initiative. It's, it's, it's long overdue, in my opinion. And if the superintendent can comment on my false sense of security concern, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cronin?
Actually, the reason that I had come up was to assure everyone that if indeed the initiative were to move forward, there would be a whole process in which we would roll this out, both to teachers, but most particularly to children and especially at the elementary level, where I don't want them frightened when they see someone in a police uniform. Now, I have to say, though it was fifth grade, police officers were in the building all of the time when we were doing dare. And I don't, I had no reports at that time that anyone was concerned, anyone was frightened. I think that it's how we treat it as adults and how we explain it to kids that's going to make the difference on how they feel. And yes, of course, we would still want to encourage them to be vigilant, everyone to be vigilant, which is a part of the reason why some of those things around the monitoring the cafeteria and that sort of thing, they will do that in addition to other responsibilities, in addition to other people doing the same thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, yes, right here, lady in the green.
My name is Carol Ardito, and I'm the president of the North Haven Education Association that represents all the teachers that work diligently in our school system. So I'd like to make a comment from the teacher's perspective on this initiative. One of our, one of the most important and primary concerns as those who care for your children and our students each and every day is the safety and welfare of our students. A police presence in each and every school is a comfort to all the administration, the teachers, students, and also to the parents, and will add a very important layer to our school's security. Vigilance by all is our modus operandi as we go through each and every school day. And there is no false sense of security, because I'm primarily stationed here at the high school, that we have had a school resource officer here and there, it has not created a false sense of security. It has created a layer of security that helps us get through each and every day of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the gentleman who I had stopped earlier here to speak, it might be Mr. Jakel, would you like to come back up? Okay, you're welcome. Who would like to speak? Is there any, yes, Jenny Caldwell?
Jenny Caldwell, 69, Kimberly Circle. I had, last week when I heard that this was happening, had started a petition to request that the, these two items, five and six, be adjourned to a referendum or paper ballot. And the reason that I was requesting that is that this is a very, very big issue and that there are many opinions and not every one. Matter of fact, there's, there are many people who cannot be here tonight to vote one way or another, given the fact that there was only a week, about a week turnaround time. I, I do have a petition. I have about 155 signatures on it. I wasn't able to get it together, just based on the quick turnaround, to get the 200 signatures that were, that would allow me to file it with the town clerk's office. But I spent a good chunk of this weekend talking with people. And I just want to be clear, the petition was not about supporting or voting against either one of the items on the agenda. It was 100% about bringing this to a referendum where everyone has the ability to, to vote on this. And the, you know, there were people on both sides of, of the issue that signed this petition feeling that it is really important that everyone in town have the ability to vote, ask questions, and learn more about it. There are some that were very much for these, for resource officers, and there were some that were very opposed to it, parents and teachers on both sides of the, of the issue. A majority of the people felt that they didn't have enough information and they had questions about whether this is the best security measure or, or whether there are other things that we should be looking at, or even how the program was going to be rolled out. So I, I am once again going to request that, that these, that these two items, given the impact on the school district and on the well-being of kids, that, that it gets moved to a paper ballot and a referendum so that, it's wonderful that all the people that are here tonight are here, but if you are on vacation or if you're putting children to bed or you don't have, or you're working, you don't have the ability to vote, and this is, it just is such a huge issue that I am once again going to request that this go to a referendum or a paper ballot so that all the people in town have the right and the ability to have a say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Caldwell, I'm going to ask the town clerk to speak to that issue regarding the referenda question.
Mrs. Caldwell is correct. She contacted me last week and referenced the idea of having one, the issue of the supernumeracy referred to referenda. But state law is very clear, and I can't speak to the legality. If the town attorney would like to come up and speak to that issue, but I spoke to one of the town attorneys, and state law would have required that she file, the petition that she spoke of was 200 verified signatures 24 hours prior to this meeting tonight, and that wasn't done. So we can't do legally, based upon what I've learned from the attorney, what she's requesting. But if the attorney would like to speak to that issue clearly?
The advice that you were given is correct.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Mr. Katz?
The world has changed in the past 50 years. Drugs have infiltrated the schools and the families of many children. Many parents do not even recognize the signs of unhappy or confused children, not to mention the drug users. An SRO would be very helpful with children have problems. Children will go to an officer. I understand they've already done that in the high school. Teachers are sometimes overwhelmed with the responsibility of education as well as secondary parenting of the students. They are expected to anticipate the possibility of a student doing harm to himself or others. In the past 10 years, we have seen far too many tragic acts of violence in schools. Recently, a school resource officer prevented another catastrophe. Unfortunately, with the recent events in North Haven, good as well as bad, North Haven is well-publicized in the news around the country. It could be targeted by forces outside as well as from within the town. We now have the opportunity to initiate a school safety program by placing experienced, well-trained, armed, retired officers, police officers in every school. The alternative is to just wait and see if our children and teachers are injured, maimed, or killed by a deranged individual that for some reason decides to target and attack people in the North Haven school system. To the people in town opposed to implementing the safety program, hopefully someday you will never need to say you wished you had not stood in the way of protecting someone injured by a deranged individual in our schools. Please vote in favor of this proposal. As far as a referendum, we only get 5% of the town turning out to a referendum, so it's, it's not an awful lot. If you really wanted, you'll get, vote on this, you'd be here tonight. I have, I do have one question. The senior, the SRO in the high school, as I see this, he is not part of the, of the program as, as a supernumerary. He's a full-time officer, which puts him into a different financial status. Can he not be moved into the same status as all the other SROs?
Chief McLaughlin, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, the idea of keeping the, the full-time regular police officer in the high school is because if there's going to be any type of, of either juvenile summons that's issued or any type of court appearance that is somewhere down the road needed, then that person can, can follow up with that. You know, in the last, in the last four years, we've had zero incidences of, of anybody being cited for anything at any of the elementary schools. I think we only had 10 incidents in the last four years at the middle school. Incidents that happened on campus where police actually took some type of enforcement action of some sort, whether the person's sent to a juvenile review board or, or given a coupon to go down to juvenile court. So that's, that's the idea behind that. More, more of the activity that's generated with the older students at the high school would require a full-time police officer. And that way he can follow up on any type of, you know, legal issues, so to speak. They're more rap to happen here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes. And if I'm not seeing you in the back, just wave because I can't see very well with the lights. Yell.
Nancy Barrett, Crespey Drive. So from what I've heard this evening, it seems as though, as Chair Anita Anderson mentioned, this is a proposal that is a work in progress. And I believe that her question was actually never answered. If there are additional comments or feedback, either from the Board of Education or from additional members of our community or members of the faculty, there's no opportunity beyond this evening to make changes to this proposal if we all vote to move forward with it. And I don't believe that there's any reason to hastily move forward with language that has not been thoroughly thought through with input from everyone in the community. The job description language is important. I have to disagree with the police chief that I don't believe that it's appropriate for an SRO to act like a police officer and do whatever he or she thinks is necessary independent of the job description. I think that this is a very specific position that should have a very specific set of expectations. And I feel as though the presentation that was made to Mr. Frieda should be presented to the entire town. We should be able to hear the pros and cons of this proposal with data and evidence to support it. And lastly, I would just wonder if anyone has given consideration to flipping the order of the two-step plan and perhaps improve the infrastructure of the five schools that are not currently in compliance in advance of adding these SROs? And lastly, are there plans for an objective annual assessment of the Public School Supernumerary Program? And will the results be shared with the public that funds it? The proposed term is for five years.
Okay, Ms. Barrett, I'm going to ask Town Attorney to answer your first question and then Dr. Cronin can speak to your other ones. Thank you.
The, the ordinance cannot be amended absent a notice being given at the town meeting of, similar to the process that was followed for this evening, it would go to the Board of Selectmen, any proposed recommended changes to the ordinance, and then the Board of Selectmen would then recommend it to the town meeting. So the process would start- process would start again. There would be a new call of a town meeting, um, there would be a new opportunity for everybody to review. It would be posted in the town clerk's office, it would be posted online, and, uh, the town meeting would have to vote to amend the ordinance. The same process that's followed with every other ordinance that's on the books.
Okay, so let me try to clarify that for everybody, or I'm going to ask you to clarify. So, somebody, who could, who could make that first suggestion or amendment if it was so thought that this needed to be changed? How would that process start? Would it start again with the, the way this one did, or are there other ways that it could start?
In, in terms of amendments, sometimes they're recommended by myself, um, potentially based upon a change in the law. Um, if I find that something from an enforcement standpoint is not working as it should, it's not efficient, um, it's not thorough enough, it's not what we need as a town, or you need as a town, I will make a recommendation to amend the ordinance. Um, sometimes ordinance amendments, sometimes proposed ordinances originate with town residents.
Okay, and Board of Ed members could also, or the Board of Ed could also do that?
Absolutely.
So, does that answer that first question for you? You have to come back up if you're going to, I just want to make sure your question gets answered, because I know other people seem to have that question also.
From, from my understanding, the Board of Education members have not voted on the language that is contained in this ordinance this evening. Is that correct, Anita?
If...
I know you don't need to...
Okay, wait, 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 no, no, direct them all here. If you want, I'll ask the chairman of the Board of Ed to come up.
Okay, so could you please ask Anita?
Yes. Anita Anderson, can you please come up and answer that question?
Thank you.
Right over here.
The Board of Education does not have to approve the wording on, uh, the job description. The Board of Ed, but the Board of Ed had reviewed it, and we have seen it, and as Dr. Cronin, uh, had said a few moment, little while ago, some of the input that he gave in was input that he had gotten from, from the Board of Education. That was why my question was, how do you, if we ever wanted to add something to the job description, how do we add something? And then you explained tonight that what would hap- happen as we did that. Because when I use the word "work in progress," as we start this program, we may see something, or the teachers, or the administrators, we come back to us, or the police officer may come back and say, "I think we should add this," or "I think we should do this." And that's where I want to look for. Whatever we can do to enhance safety and have everyone comfortable in the school system is where I was looking to go in the future, as, as we work on this, as I called it "work in progress."
Thank you.
So, they have to go through...
So, I think she said...
Through this exact same process?
Yes.
Even if the source is coming from our Board of Education, who ultimately is the body that is elected to ensure the safety of our students?
Yes. We would have to go through this process at town meeting.
So, if the Board of Education is not comfortable with the current language, or feels as though there has to be some flexibility, why are we racing forward?
I can't answer, I can't answer that. I think if any Board of Education member is here and wanted to speak to that after Dr. Cronin answers your other questions, they can come up and speak to it. Well, no, you can't, Dr. Cronin's going to answer your questions first. Thank you.
Okay, and then yes. So, if, if I understood correctly, it was, can we, um, do the infrastructure changes first, and then consider putting the police officer in the buildings? Yeah, and, um, my recommendation would be that we must start with the police officer in the school, then... And the reason that I say that is that I'm sure that in those schools where there were shootings this year, that there were many of the infrastructure recommendations that I've made to, um, Mr. Frida. And so, I think that a police officer in uniform...
There were also SROs in all of those schools.
That, and I think that in, um, in some of those schools, it made a difference, and we don't know, yeah, we don't know the entire story of the Florida shooting. We know what the, what the media has presented. Right. So, I think that it is really critical that we look at our needs in our community, and I believe in order for our children to be safe in school, we need to start with an individual there for the first, as step one, as a deterrent from anything else.
Yes, sir. We have a Board of Ed member.
Wes O'Brien, Kings Highway. I'm also vice chair of the Board of Ed. Um, it seems to me that, uh, with regard to your question, there is room in here to wander around a little bit, and there's room here for the Board of Ed subsequently to make suggestions with regard to the duties. I might be wrong, so this might be less of a, this, this might be a question rather than a statement, but where it says that the, that the, uh, general duties will, um, will include but not be limited to, that statement "not be limited to" seems to give us some room to maneuver a little bit, if the Board of Ed wants to make policy that speaks to whatever, uh, the SRO's duties happen to be. So, I, I, you can either, I don't know if that makes sense to you or not, but maybe it's illegal.
I don't, I think that's a legal question.
I'm not entirely sure that I agree with that. I, I think ultimately, I, I can't imagine that if the Board of Education or the superintendent's office wants to make a recommendation to the school resource officer, supernumerary that's placed in a school, um, or to the police department and the office of the chief with regard to the program, I would imagine that there's, of course, going to be a dialogue, um, if there's something that doesn't work. I don't think that that's a legal question. I think that that's probably an expectation, um, of, of everybody that's considering this vote tonight. Um, and I think that the people that, you know, are going to be operating the program, um, you know, are going to work as a team. I don't, I don't think that it's a legal question at all.
Thank you.
Hi, Anna Bono, Alexander Drive. Um, I'm not sure what else there is to discuss. I, you mentioned that there's some additional duties that may possibly be included, Ms. Barrett, but I think the majority of the parents in this room just want to vote, and vote yes, because we're tired of talking. What are we talking about? Can we just, we keep talking and talking and talking. Why would we table this tonight? You don't, we don't think that what's in here can be modified. If we, if they, if the police officers think that, and the Board of Education, and Dr. Cronin think that something should be modified for the children, and something should be included that wasn't included for the safety of the children, don't you think they're going to make that change? I, I just don't understand why we need to keep changing things, table it, ask for a referendum? As Mr. Katz said, we never get anybody to vote anyways. The people that cared and wanted to be here tonight are here. I understand some people could not make it, but I, I am not putting my children to bed tonight, because I wanted to be here because it was important.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're not calling a vote yet, so everyone gets to speak if they like to, and there is no motion to table.
Hi, everyone. Vastiyako, Supper State Street, and I just wanted to reiterate the same sentiment. I'm a parent of an eight-year-old and a five-year-old, and I look at all these instances across the United States, and I say to myself, "Why isn't anything being done?" And so, I want to thank the first selectmen, I want to thank the police chief, and I want to thank our superintendent for actually taking a proactive approach, rather than sitting back and saying, "It's not going to happen for us. We can wait a few more months, we can wait another year, we can talk about minutia." Because the bottom line is, it's now been brought to the table. So, if we vote to delay and something happens, God forbid, within the next few months, or the next school year, it's on everyone's consciences right now that we weren't able to implement something definitive to give someone a, a fighting chance if something happens. There's room to maneuver within the small minutia in the verbiage. We can pass it tonight, and we can work on the verbiage if it needs to be done. And so, thank you once again for being proactive and putting our children first.
Thank you. Danielle?
Uh, Danielle Murphy, Clintonville Road. Um, I am a parent of a three-and-a-half-year-old who wants to be a police officer. He went to the carnival in his police officer costume, and we teach him that if he needs a safe place, a person to go to, it would be a police officer. I also am a parent of a nineteen-month-old, and I dread every day the idea of sending my kid to school right now, because who knows what could happen? I am just as concerned as every other parent here, but please do not speak for me when I question some of the details that are lacking in this ordinance. And I think as a parent and as a resident, it is my right to ask for questions and get more details. Who, who is training this SRO? What sort of protocol do they go through? Do they go through a mental health screening? Do we know that they don't have trauma that makes them trigger happy? That makes them want to do, I, I don't know these things. These are questions that I ask as a parent, because when my child is in the presence of a gun, I'm going to want to understand what sort of parameters people need to be held in. So, please, I am not in support or against an SRO. I would like details and questions answered, and I do think that there are plenty of people who can't make it to this meeting that absolutely deserve the right to vote on this through referendum. I don't think that it is right, as residents and community members, to be little people who cannot make it here tonight for whatever reason it is, whether they are invalid, they are unable to get out of their bed, or if they're putting their kids to bed tonight, or they're on vacation. So, I think that, from that standpoint, that is very sad to see. So, do not doubt my concern as a parent for my child's safety, because I am scared just as much as you are. But there are questions and details that have not been mapped out in this ordinance that people are asking for further information on. And from what I heard from the town attorney, if we are voting on this ordinance tonight, it would be on the language as is. Unless I am mistaken, this is not a work in progress. So, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Would you like the Chief McLaughlin to answer some of those questions?
Oh, yes, please. What sort of, um, training do they go through, um, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, so, so the, the officers that would be doing this are certified Connecticut police officers. They've all been to the police academy. They've all had years of, of experience in dealing with, um, all kinds of, uh, issues. You name it, they've done it. We have, we have an onsite, uh, one of our sergeants is state-certified, um, for, um, what is it, the, uh, no, no, it's actually, uh, it's, it's not the, the crisis intervention team, although we've had people go to the, uh, crisis intervention training. Ours does the, um, I'm, I'm trying to think of what the word is for, but all, all of us have gone to it. Uh, you know, you talk about the de-escalation is, is the, is the, that's the new trigger word. Uh, every, everybody talks about de-escalation, how to talk people down to things. Uh, one of our sergeants is, is state-certified, and that, and not only have all of our police officers gone, uh, we've, we've sent our dispatchers and, and even clerical staff and the whole nine yards. So, so everybody's had, uh, training as police officers. We've had, uh, the de-escalation training already, uh, that's the whole department. And, and I have had a discussion with the superintendent already, where, uh, if this proposal were to go forward, or this ordinance were to go forward, that these, uh, super, uh, supernumeraries would be, uh, available or offered to go to any of the training that the, uh, the schoolteachers actually go to on their shop days.
Could we make, is there any sort of mandatory training that, that police officers would have in terms of working with small children? We're talking about five-year-olds, et cetera. I, I know Yale may do something, but I'm not well-versed in that.
Right. There's, and, and there is, um, there's an, uh, extended, during the summer, uh, session while school's out, there is, uh, ongoing SRO training that, that they could, they could go to. So, you know, that would be available.
Uh, sorry. I'm asking, is this something that we would put in our ordinance that very deep, like, very much details what sort of training that they should go to, and what, you know, how we can stay up to, you know, standards for not only de-escalation, but working with small children? Because if we're going to, I would like it to be very clear that these, these SROs are here to protect, but not to discipline. So, I would, I would love to see language like that.
And, and, and like I said, the, the training, our training is always ongoing. It's regardless of what we, we, we deal with kids even in our regular job.
Right.
Um, this would just be, we would be there, you know, every day. Um, but again, um, we can't, we can't really limit this with so much detail, because it's such a broad, uh, when you, when you really look at it, it's, it's a broad, broad, um, you know, environment that you would be going into. You know, I understand what you're saying, you know, and I appreciate it, uh, you know, but it's, it's one of those things where there, there is training that is, is available, and, uh, we're, we're going to make it happen. We, I'm, I'm telling you, I, we will have our people that are going to be spot-on. You'd be surprised. I'd love to see you come back at Christmas time, and...
I, I'm not doubting the wonderful effort and the work that our police officers put in on a daily basis, putting their lives on the line. I'm just saying, when we are talking about having our small schoolchildren in a room with someone with a gun, regardless, we have to, these are my children too. I worked very hard to have them and keep them alive. So, I want to see certain processes and procedure and protocol followed, because this is my kid's life.
Right.
And that's where I'm coming from as a resident.
One of the other things that I didn't mention earlier was when, when we talked about uniform, uh, we've already had, uh, discussion where we would, uh, we would have them in a softer uniform. They're not going to be dressed like myself, you know, with a, a necktie and, and, um, you know, something more in a, in a BDU pant, or a golf shirt type of, of, of a, a uniform, just to kind of, uh, you know, just to soften that, that, um, you know, that cop image that a lot of these little people would, would think of.
I mean, my, my son's a fan of you, of, of all police officers. I guess my point is, these are answers that we are easily getting, but to sort of, uh, this is information for the entire public, that they deserve the right to have that. So, I'm asking, or pointing out that there are deep, the devil's in the details here, because this is our children's lives. So, that's just the other side of it.
Thank you. I think Dr. Cronin wants to say something before I call on the next person.
Mrs. Murphy, you raised a, a good point, actually, that I, um, want to speak to a little bit, and that is the issue of protocols. And we develop protocols within the school system for everything, from hiring teachers to how are we going to order supplies, what the committees must consist of, et cetera. So, we will write very clear, or, um, protocols for the people in this, in this role, and have, and will be happy to share those with the community. Um, so, it, the other thing that we need to be clear about and careful of is that the needs may be different at different schools. And so, when you look at, that's why the broad language of letter A is appealing, because then what we need at the middle school can be based on what's needed at the middle school, and, or what we do at the middle school, rather, and what we need at the elementary school is based on what each elementary school needs. Um, the general idea of what they'll be doing will remain the same... The general idea of what they'll be doing will remain the same throughout, but there may be other specific things that we need that we will write protocols for, we will have protocols for, and police officers will be very clear. We meet with them regularly. The principal will meet with them regularly. The mental health team will meet with them regularly. There's a school psychologist and a school social worker in every building. So it isn't as though we're ignoring that part of this whole social issue. But I think that the job description or the responsibilities as laid out allow us to do all of the things that you've said, and we would do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Randy Peterson, Blue Hills Road. I come up here today wearing a few different hats. I'm a parent of three kids in our schools, two in the middle school, one in the high school. I am a member of the Board of Education and I'm also a teacher, not in North Haven, but I am a teacher. And I think a lot of people are here because they're very passionate for this on one side or the other, and I would hope that people came in with an open mind, willing to listen to understand instead of listening to respond, so that you can hear all of the different perspectives involved in making this decision happen. As a parent and a taxpayer of this town, I would do absolutely anything to keep my children safe, just as all of us would. But when they are not with me, I have to pass on that responsibility and have the confidence that the adults in charge are going to keep over, take over keeping them safe for me. Our teachers do a phenomenal job protecting our students and are often asked to do things above and beyond what should typically be expected of an educator. In having an additional trained adult in each school full-time is an option that I am in full support of. Please know that as a Board of Education member, and I do say what I'm saying now is my opinion, not the opinion of the Board. I mean, it could be, but I'm speaking for myself, that we read, we question, we research, and we discuss topics such as this until we feel we are each making educated decisions. As a member of the Board, when making decisions such as this, we have to take many things into consideration. Many of these things might take place in casual conversations, some research we do on our own, and some takes place at our meetings. We know we will never make everyone happy with the decisions we're charged with, however, we make the decision that we feel is best for most. That is what we're charged with doing. It's unfortunate and sad, but safety issues in schools today are not what they used to be. Looking at the news, according to CNN, we're 21 weeks into 2018 and there have already been 23 school shootings where someone was hurt or killed. That averages out to more than one shooting per week. That's 23 too many shootings. And they are instances we've heard about. What about the instances we haven't? Now, for people who feel that an armed officer would be intimidating for young children, I hear you. But there are armed officers in movie theaters, in malls, highly-attended town events on the green. How is this different? Because it's in a school? Sadly, even our youngest students are aware of the safety precautions we take at some level. Every student in every single one of our schools practices lockdown drills. They know exactly what to do when those special words are announced over the intercom. They know where to go, they know what to do, and they know how to behave until a drill is over. Our youngest might think they're going into lockdown because of bad weather. Our oldest are unfortunately very aware of the reality. Don't you think your child, your children, would feel safer knowing that a policeman is in their school with them all of the time? Have you asked them? The officers chosen for these positions would be officers who will relate very well with children, possibly retired North Haven officers who may already know your family because they themselves are North Haven residents. I can say with complete confidence that no one who is part of this hiring process would ever put anyone in any of our schools who would not be able to relate to the children of such young ages. That being said, should any of our 3,160 students ever have anxiety or concerns regarding the SRO's presence? We have one full-time social worker and one full-time school psychologist at every elementary school and at the middle school, and two full-time people in each position at the high school, in addition to guidance counselors at the middle and high schools. Do we need more support? Probably. But we are very proud of the progress we've made in the past few years, and we keep providing the services as much as we can, which is why this is a wonderful opportunity and one that will not affect the educational budget. As a teacher, as I said earlier, I had unfortunately a very personal experience with something like this. We have an officer at our school. He knows the teachers, he knows the students, he knows their families, he knows our neighborhood. He's part of our school community and is a very positive and contributing presence to our school environment. About three months ago, a colleague and I were within six feet of a student that brought a loaded weapon to our school. He had it hidden under his coat, and thanks to another student who saw it, and after some very tense moments, we were able to get the weapon from him and de-escalate the situation. I don't know if this would have happened so swiftly and ended so quickly had the student not already known and trusted the SRO that is at our school. Our officer made it to the third floor very quickly to help us. Needless to say, this was a very emotional, very stressful situation, and for me, it created a level of anxiety that I have never experienced before. I am a teacher. I became a teacher to help children with reading and math, to solve problems, to become contributing members of society. I did not sign up for this part of the job. But yet I found myself in a threatening situation, and even with all the lockdown drills we've practiced, with all the situations we've talked through, I can promise you that unless you are properly trained, you are never prepared for something like this. And you never know what you will do or how you will react when it happens. I tell you this because it is real. This happens and there is no way to predict it. You think it would never happen in North Haven, but I'm sure people of Sandy Hook thought the same. If having these SROs at our schools influences a threatening person to not approach one of our schools, if he or she can hold off this person until the police can get to the school for assistance, if he or she can lessen the violence in any way, isn't it worth it? And you know, maybe in a few years, we will be so fortunate enough to look back and say, gee, none of our SROs were ever needed for any school threat. Would that be such a bad thing? From the situation that happened with me from that day on, our school officer was nothing but an emotional support, not only for our students who were involved and witnessed the event, but he was there for me. He was there for the teachers, for the adults involved. He would visit me daily to check in on me. He would walk me to my car if I wanted him to. He talked to me and asked me how I was doing every single day until the last day of school. He was the one single adult in my room who was a constant support from the instant it happened until the last day of school. We are not only talking about the safety of our students, but our teachers, our staff, our administrators, who are parents themselves, grandparents, daughters and sons, sisters and brothers. They work so very hard every single day to keep our students safe. Why wouldn't we want to help them do this even better than they already do? Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, who's been... Gentlemen in the corner has been waiting very patiently.
Good evening. Could you hear me back there? I want to congratulate...
I'm sorry, name and address, please.
I'm sorry, what?
Name and address.
Oh, yes. My name is Angelo Appi. If you've been reading the North Haven Advisor lately, you might be familiar with my name. But before I get into that, let me congratulate the Chief of Police, Tom McLaughlin, Dr. Cronin, the Board of Education, First Electman Michael Frida, and everyone else who has brought this meeting here tonight. And hopefully, everybody will vote yes for having law enforcement officers assigned to all of our schools.
Mr. Appi, I need your address. I need you to state your address because...
Yes. My home address is 11 Cricket Court in North Haven.
Perfect. Thank you. Go on.
Okay. I've prepared a letter to be announced tonight. Unfortunately, it's going to sound like I told you so. So please bear with me. I've written many letters advocating the absolute necessity for having law enforcement officers assigned to all of our North Haven schools. What I have been advocating for the last decade, I believe, has finally brought us here tonight, and that is to vote for the safety of the children and our schoolteachers. Five years prior to Sandy Hook, the Sandy Hook tragedy, I forewarned, and I'm not Nostradamus, the superintendent of schools by letter and in person that a school shooting in Connecticut was a definite possibility, that the Board of Education must have law enforcement officers assigned to the middle and the upper schools to protect our children and teachers. That proposal was rejected. Rejected by the Board of Ed. One year following the Sandy Hook massacre, the superintendent, when interviewed by the New Haven Register regarding that letter, stated Mr. Appi was ahead of his time. Despite the mounting school shootings taking place in the United States, my proposal was rejected twice again by the Board of Ed. It seems as though for 10 years, I alone was crusading and concerned for our teachers and schoolchildren. Prior school shootings across the United States have proved that the police may not arrive until after many a child and teacher has been murdered or maimed. All the more reason to have officers in all of our schools. For example, it took nearly four minutes for the police to respond to the Sandy Hook shooting. Four minutes. Not blaming the police, but there are circumstances beyond their control when responding to such incidents. The police did not enter the school until six minutes after receiving the 911 call. The shooter fired at least 156 shots in less than five minutes and killed 20 helpless children and six adults. I say no further proof is necessary to realize that when a school shooting is in progress, the children and teachers cannot depend on a police response from random police patrols to save their lives. And again, all the more reason to have officers in all of our schools. For the children's sake, for everyone's sake, I urge everyone here tonight to vote yes to have the town assign, and this is in parentheses, select and specially-trained law enforcement officers to all of our schools. And I'd like to emphasize once again, select and specially-trained officers. Being a former instructor with the New Haven Police Department and having trained officers not only in New Haven but on a regional basis, and being familiar with the standards as set forth by the Police Officers Training Council, I can say unequivocally, these officers are going to need a lot more training. May God bless and protect our children and our teachers should a no vote be reached tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appi. Lady in the back.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Scrofani, 45 Beechwood Drive, and I just have one question. I was wondering about the hiring process. Specifically tonight, there has been numerous references to the positions going to retired officers, and several times male pronouns have been subscribed to the description of these officers. Can you explain how the application and evaluation process will be fair and balanced and ensure the jobs go to candidates who will be the most qualified?
Chief McLaughlin?
The... As it stands, the officers in North Haven will be evaluated. If they so choose to apply for this position, we'll look at their body of work over the past 20, 25, 30 years, and if they fit, then they fit. If they don't fit, they don't fit. And if we don't have enough of the local law enforcement officers, then we will go outside and we will find certified officers.
So the plan is to begin with an internal process and not an external as well?
Correct.
Any other details for the hiring process?
As far as...
Well, I guess I'm just a little concerned that I just, to put it as delicately as possible, I don't think it should be a retirement plan for police officers, so I just want to ensure that we're opening it up to qualified candidates.
All of the officers are qualified. If they weren't qualified to do the supernumerary job, they wouldn't be qualified to do their daily work right now, and they wouldn't be on the job. But again, to look at, you have different schools here. You have an elementary school and you also have a middle school, and that's... You have to make sure that you have the right fit. Okay? And that's what we'll look at. We'll look at the officer's body of work over a number of years and make sure that they are... That they're going to fit for us.
Okay. And one last question. When you say "we," is there a committee? Like, how will the... Who will be evaluating the officers?
The selection, I will bring the name of the person to the Board of Police Commission, and they would make the appointment as a supernumerary.
Okay. So the Police Commission will hire and the Board of Ed will consult, or no?
At this time, the... I will certainly have discussion with Dr. Cronin on this, but the selection of the personnel will be through the Police Department. And obviously, we've had a relationship for the past 25 years at the very least with our current SRO program, and we always sit down or have some type of phone call just to let them know who's coming and who's not coming. And there's always some type of dialogue at the end of the school year that I have had with the principals as far as how are we working with the current SRO. as far as how are we working with- with the current, uh, SRO. So if- if they don't fit, they don't fit.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go over here. Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. I would like to thank Dr. Cronin for explaining, um, how G, the letter G, patrol the exterior perimeter of the schools and H patrol the interior of the schools, how that includes, uh, patrolling the student hallways when there's traffic, uh, patrolling the cafeteria during lunch, patrolling outside during student activity, example recess. So thank you for that explanation. And I wanted to ask the chief a question. Is it possible with the training that the SRO, um, uh, candidates will be receiving, could that also include training with Yale Child Study?
If- if there needs to be any expanded training, you know, that wasn't- that wasn't part of the plan initially. But if, for some reason, if there's something that, um, that they can offer us, then we'll look at it.
I heard they're very good.
Yeah, we'll- we'll- we'll look at- we'll look at that. But again, this is, um, this is something that, you know, will- will pretty much mirror what the officer here at the SRO's, um, assignments have been over the past 25 years at- at the high school. If there is any type of a benefit that's gonna spin off of that, then, or if any new training, you know, becomes available, we can offer- we can offer that to our people. We're not gonna- we're just not gonna lock down into a, uh, into a mindset on- on something like this.
So the reason why, uh, the suggestion of the Yale Child Study is because these SROs are going to be, you know, in a school environment with the children are younger. So, um, I think that it would be a benefit, especially when you're dealing with kindergartners versus dealing with a senior in high school. So that's why I would recommend it.
We're open for suggestions along that line. Uh, you know, I certainly don't wanna make promises that I can't keep, but, you know, we- we are always, uh, we- we always try to keep an- an open mind. Uh, we- we don't wanna get into a mindset where it's, uh, you know, just police business as usual.
All right, and lastly, I just want to say, in case you haven't guessed, I am in favor of voting for the SROs and I encourage other people to vote yes as well.
Thank you. Ms. Tim Gabriel, then Michelle Spader, then Mr. Bedker.
Hi, uh, Tim Gabriel from Renee Lane. Um, I just wanted to, um, just, uh, you know, sort of state upfront that, like, I think everybody in this room is 100% in favor of, like, everything that we can do to protect our children. And school safety, uh, is our number one priority. We wouldn't be taking our time out at nine o'clock at night on a Monday to- to do this. We weren't. You know, I've- I've had the misfortune of, um, having two family members, um, who have worked at universities where there have been school shootings that have happened. Uh, my aunt was at, um, Dawson College, 2006, one of the rare school shootings that happened in Canada. And my, um, brother is a professor at Virginia Tech, um, where, of course, there was a really terrible massacre that happened, uh, about 10 years ago, a little over. You know, so I think when we come up with concerns, I- I don't think that we should be coming from a place of, you know, thinking that these are, um, you know, any- anybody has any, you know, specific issues with, um, you know, the- the police in town or any of the decisions that are being made. And certainly, I've- I've watched some of the board meetings that have happened, um, recently. And, um, a lot of my concerns were actually assuaged by watching those meetings. I think that, um, you know, Dr. Cronin and Mr. Frida and, um, Police Chief McLaughlin are going about this in a very thoughtful way, and I do certainly appreciate that. In terms of the data that's out there, um, you know, I've- I've heard people say that SROs are a very effective tool to deter school shootings. And it certainly feels right. That definitely, like, feels like a thing that, you know, it would make us feel safe. There's not really a whole lot of data out there, so it might be true. It's very possible that that is true. The- I- I couldn't find a whole lot on there, but one of the things that I did find that I'd like to kinda use as a framing device for some of the, um, things that I wanted to bring up today is that there was a congressional review that happened after Sandy Hook about SROs. I think this was mainly about, you know, whether the federal government should fund SROs, um, from, you know, like, a federal budget perspective. I think they ultimately decided that was a little bit too, um, expensive to do that. So they're kind of handling these at the local levels. So I just wanted to read some of the things that were said, um, in that document. So it says, "A report published by the COPS Office," which is- that stands for the Community Oriented Police Shooting Services. Um, that was a program that was set up, um, under the Obama administration to, um, kind of get police more involved in the schools, get people more comfortable with cops. Notes that "there is a lack of research on SRO programs, so it's not possible to identify a 'one-size-fits-all' series of recommendations for implementing a maximally successful SRO program." "The report, however, identifies several promising practices for a successful SRO program. First, it emphasizes that all schools should develop a comprehensive school safety plan based on a thorough analysis of the problems the school is facing, and resources should be deployed accordingly." And I know from discussions with Dr. Cronin, that's already in place. It's great. We're doing it. And, um, that's- that's good, so we checked that off the box. "The report also notes that while SROs might be an important component of our overall safety plan, they should not be the only com- uh, component." And I think with the second rollout of the safety plan, that checks that box as well. "In some instances," it also says, "school safety plans may not require deployment of an SRO." So if anybody is against SROs, that is backed up in the data that some schools might not require them. It seems that SROs are in place to, um, identi- either, you know, a lot of times they get put into schools to stop, um, the escalation of school violence. I don't know, and maybe somebody can address this, um, if there have been incidents of school violence in, um, North Haven that would have required an SRO, but there hasn't been one, particularly in the middle schools and the elementary schools. And I think what probably most people wanna know is about whether they deter school shootings. If the- one of the other recommendations was, "If the school decides to use an SRO, there should be clear goals for the programs. SRO should engage in activities that directly relate to school safety goals and address identified needs. And data should be collected to determine whether the program is achieving its goals." So will there be a system set up in place, um, I guess would be one of the questions, to kind of track what the goals of the SRO program are and whether it's achieving those goals, uh, by the end of the year? We already have an SRO pro- um, at the high school. I don't know, maybe we already have something set up for that.
Okay. Is that- I figure I'll let you get through all your questions and then I'll call them up.
So according to the report, selecting officers who are likely to succeed in a school environment, such as officers who can effectively work with students, parents and school administrators have an understanding of child development and psychology, who have public speaking and teaching goals, and properly train those officers, and properly training those officers are identified as two important components of a successful SRO program. So I think that- that training that the SROs are gonna go through is- is vital, to make sure that they're, you know, a good kind of cultural fit. And I think the- the person who was up here before, um, who was, um, talking about the hiring process, I would also recommend that the, um, the Board of Ed be involved in the hiring process to some degree. Um, I don't know if they would interview the officers as well, um, or just kind of be in communication, just to- to make sure that the- the SROs are a good cultural fit. I have no doubt that Chief McLaughlin is a good judge of character of whether there'd be a law enforcement fit, but just to make sure that there's somebody who is going to be a friendly smiling face in the schools that's gonna work well with the students. To just have a little bit of additional oversight on that. Let's see, I think some of this was already addressed. "Policymakers might contemplate increasing the number of SRO programs across the country as a way to address the threat of mass shootings at viol- or at or violence in schools. However, the body of research on the effectiveness of SRO programs is noticeably limited. And the research that is available draws conflicting conclusions about whether SRO programs are effective at reducing school violence. In addition, the body of res- research on the effectiveness of SROs does not address whether their presence in school has deterred mass shootings." So that's, you know, this is from a study that your tax dollars for this is- was looking into SROs, but, you know, I ca- like, their conclusion was that we just don't know if it works.
Quiet, please. I'll have you removed if you do this again. We're listening to everyone politely tonight.
"While a law enforcement present at school might facilitate actions such as security plan or threat assessments that may promote school safety, and the presence of an SRO might serve as a deterrent to a potential school shooter or provide for a quick response if a shooting occurs, and I think we all want that. Some might be concerned that a regular law enforcement presence might have some unintended consequences for students. Research suggests that the presence of SROs might result in more children being involved in the criminal justice system for relatively minor offenses. And this in turn can result in other negative consequences, such as higher rates of suspension and a greater likelihood of dropping out of school." So I think, you know, my- one of my concerns is that, you know, that this, the SROs be involved mainly in school safety, um, the safety of the students. I- I don't think it's a problem that they would, you know, like, talk to students and interact with them and whatnot, but just being involved in sort of a disciplinary pattern, um, you know, students- students make mistakes. They mess up. And putting them into the criminal justice system can have serious effects. Particularly, um, you know, I think with students who have, you know, sort of, uh, mental health problems or- or students with disabilities, to make sure that, um, you know, I- I think it would be effective to have the SROs, um, kind of speak with the, um, the teachers and staff members who are involved with those students particularly, and talk about methods of de-escalation so they can work together in kind of a partnership, to make sure that we're kind of not looking at these as criminal problems. We're looking at them as something that can be handled within the schools. I- I really think that the- the only criminal problems that we should really be dealing with, with the in-school SROs, are ones that are, um, you know, violent in nature.
Tim, I'm gonna have Dr. Cronin answer some of your questions. Thank you.
As far as the discipline is concerned, that really isn't the role of the SRO, um, in our conversations. That isn't what we intended them to do. It really is to be a present in- presence in the school, to be, um, someone who children are familiar with. And, um, the discipline piece would be handled by the school personnel as it is currently being done. So that- there really is no intention, and when you look at the responsibilities, that's really not part of it deliberately. As far as the evaluation, I think that, yes, we- we will. I- I think that we evaluate programs every year to determine how they can be approved upon. And so I would see that at the end of this, we know what the goals are for the program. We know that we want to increase security. We know that we want to, um, create a sense of safety in schools so that parents, students, teachers, um, have one piece less to worry about or less to worry about to the degree that they may currently be worrying. And yes, we'll- we'll seek adv- uh, we'll seek information from people about how we can do it better after we've lived it. But I think that what we have going forward now is a good beginning. And I think that, um, officers will know very clearly what their responsibilities are in the building. They'll know who they're answering to. And, um, we've worked with the Police Department very closely, um, with the SRO at the high school. And so I, um, I don't foresee that being a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle Spader.
Michelle Spader, 15, Layton Court. December 14th, 2012, I sent my kids off to school like any other day, but I could never imagine the horrific events that would unfold that morning. I remember feeling sick to my stomach and crying when I heard the horrific news, and I couldn't wait for the bus to come to return my children to me. My girls did come home that day, unlike the 20 murdered six and seven-year-olds that would never be reunited with their parents. The Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting hit too close to home. My youngest daughter was the same age as the children massacred that day. From that point on, I would never see our school buildings the same way again. So many exterior doors I had never noticed before. Simple glass that could easily be broken to gain access. And not enough cameras to monitor all of these entry points. Each morning thereafter, as I would put my kids on the bus, a terrible thought would creep into my head. What if this happened in our town? I sat at a Board of Education meeting shortly after the Sandy Hook tragedy, still shaken by the events of that December morning, and listened to Mr. Appy make yet another plea to secure the schools. No action was ever taken. Over five and a half years passed and many more school shootings have occurred. Yet it wasn't acted upon. Then the Stoneman Douglas High School shooting in Parkland, Florida occurred. And the actual students who were victimized spoke out and demanded gun reform laws be enacted to make children safer while at school. When kids don't feel safe in school and parents don't feel safe sending their children to school, that is a problem as far as I am concerned. I don't agree with those that say the odds of that happening here are slim. Do you think Newtown ever expected such a thing? I'm not willing to play the odds with my children's safety. I believe a teacher's job is to teach and not be armed with a weapon to protect the children in their classroom. And the school secretary has her hands full with visitors to the school, as well as answering the phones and dealing with the constant influx of students and staff to the main office. School security should never be one of her responsibilities. I believe these SROs should absolutely be monitoring the front door, the perimeter, and the cameras. Some will say statistics don't show having an armed officer at the schools makes a difference. Tell that to the- to the families of the Dixon, Illinois students who were spared due to a quick response of a school resource officer in May, who shot the gunman before he had a chance to harm anyone. Or the Great Mills, South Dakota SRO in March, who confronted and fatally wounded the gunman who had already shot two students. Or the Centennial, Colorado SRO, who prevented more carnage by cornering the gunman in the school library, thereby limiting the loss of life to one student. We have seen the devastation a large-capacity weapon can inflict in a short period of time. By the time first responders get there, the damage will be done. I'm not willing to gamble with our children's lives. I am in support of appointing trained, armed officers to protect our most precious gifts.
Thank you. Mr.- Mr. Bedker, and then Amanda.
Fritz Bedker, 290 Spring Road. Ms. Barrett, I'm afraid that once again we have been outgunned. Ms. Caldwell, you're absolutely right. This should have been put to a referendum. The details of this proposal are outstandingly lacking, in my opinion. Dr. O'Brien, your- your proposal is sound as always. And if everybody involved in the decision-making process were as sensible and intelligent as you, I could have stayed home and let you work this out yourself. However, I don't necessarily think that this is true. To the people that don't like statistics, I'm going to disappoint you. Fortunately, the young gentleman with the green checkered shirt covered a lot of the points that I was going to cover, did it rather thoroughly. And so I am going to spare you that part of my already boring monologue. However, I do wanna point out that you're talking about school safety. I think the larger issue is safety. And what we're concentrating on entirely in this, uh, presentation is school shootings. I'd like to point out that, um, if we have over the past two years an average of 60, um, discharges of firearms on, uh, school premises, and if we have 98,000 schools, basically, um, you're going to be paying these SROs for roughly, uh, till the year 3020- basically, you're going to be paying these SROs for roughly till the year 2020 before you will have a 50% chance of encountering a shooter on your premises. Now, anybody could say, boy, won't that old conjurer feel like a dope when somebody shows up with an AK-47 and starts yelling "Akbar Allah" and starts shooting up the building. Yeah, I'll be very upset about that. But on the other hand, while we're waiting for Osama bin Laden to break down the door at the high school, hundreds of students in that school will have died from drug abuse. We've lost 750 of them last year, and that doesn't count the deaths that are going to occur in their 30s and 40s when they continue their habit. If you're talking about keeping your children safe, what about child suicide? We're going to lose a couple of thousand in the country because of suicides or deaths caused by drug abuse or by continual depression. I understand there was an anti-suicide program at some point that is no longer extant. I don't know the details of that. If I were going to put money towards the school system, which I definitely wouldn't, I would be thinking of addressing problems that are more current and immediate. If you want to take a look at your school, I don't know a real lot about terrorism or anything else, but as a 60s acid baby, I know plenty about dope, okay? And your school has tons of it.
Mr. Betker, I got to steer you back to the, I got to steer you back to the point of the supernumeraries.
It's like all over, okay? Your child is more likely to win the Irish sweepstakes and get up, run over a train 10 minutes later than to be shot in a terrorist act in a school. But they, they will certainly encounter people who have drugs. So just draw your attention to the fact that we are dealing with not just a question of safety, but a question of perceived safety. I believe that this has been lost in this debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gabriel, and then Tom White, and then Brian Testa, and then Mr. Katz. You will wait until we see if there's anybody else, and then maybe we can finish with this first one. Let's wait and see who's getting up and leaving.
I'm Amanda Gabriel from Renee Lane. I'm going to get this quick. I'm on the Board of Ed here in North Haven as well. And so for me, the calculus on this was even if it is a .006% chance that this will save my kid's life or anybody's life, for me, it's worth it. I encourage everybody to vote yes tonight, and I just want to encourage you to watch the last special Board of Finance meeting and Board of Selectmen meeting when a ton of questions were very thoughtfully answered by the chief, Dr. Cronin, and Mr. Frida about the topic of discipline versus, you know, securing and patrolling the perimeters. I want to commend you guys. I think you've done a fantastic job here. I know that folks still do have some questions, but when I have reached out to get answers, I have found kind and thoughtful voices on the other side of those emails. So thanks.
Thank you.
Please vote yes.
Tom?
Tom White, Summer Lane. I hope I can put some of your fears to rest. I'm a retired member for over three decades of the New Haven Police Department, and over two decades of that, I received countless hours of training, some from the Yale Child Study Center. We were educated on crisis intervention, children with disabilities, and troubled children, and children in general, how to deal with them on a daily basis. I like to consider myself as a protector, a problem solver, and a mentor. I wasn't an SRO, but I had the pleasure of being able to serve in public housing for five-hour stints at a time for several years. I was in full uniform and in a police car. Started out making introductions with children coming up to my police car. One, then three, got up to a dozen. They started to interact with me, not with my uniform. It was what was right here. Everything on my duty belt was not allowed to be brought in as a distraction. Beyond the children coming to my car, I started to get parents thanking me for spending the amount of time that I did talking with their children. I was often off-duty with my wife in Walmart, and I was greeted by people, I didn't even remember their names, but they remembered my name. It was a truly rewarding experience. A trained police officer that's certified by the Police Officers Standards and Training in the state of Connecticut cannot be certified if they're not qualified. They won't allow it. The Yale Child Study Center, I thanked them and applaud them, the program that was incepted by Dr. Stephen Marins and carried out by clinicians and social workers, you name it, had a collaboration with the police officers, with our entire department of over 400 officers. We all got the training, and it was the most rewarding experience in my life. Children will never fear you when they get to know you. The initial interaction, it's up to you to make that right. And I just want to tell you, there's nothing for you to fear here. That extra level of security will be the most rewarding thing you can ever do for your children. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Brian Testa, Mepavu. First, I got to, I'm glad Tom White said that because I'm in favor of this, but it starts at home. Unfortunately, we demonized our police officers to the point where they are bad, and it starts at home. We have a police officer here tonight. Is anybody scared of that person because he has, he's armed? No. We shouldn't do that with our children. And I don't care if they're five, six, 10, 20. The next shooter is out there. They're plotting it. It's not a matter if, it's a matter of when and where. Our police officers that we have here in North Haven, if you've lived here all your life, you probably knew those police officers. You respected them. That starts at home. Unfortunately, there are people that have kind of taken this social media thing and put it around this weekend, demonizing, I would consider, our police officers because they're going to discipline them. They're not there to discipline them, but if they act out, they go to Dr. Cronin, they go to a teacher. Let's not demonize these SROs. They are police officers. Yes, they are armed. When you go home this next school year, take the conversation with them. The police officer is not there to hurt you. You shouldn't be scared. Teach them respect, as our chief said about the Golden Book. I hope we vote for it tonight as we go to the next step, because we have to reprocess our thinking of how our security system works. One point of entry, one point of exit. So I wanted to make it quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Vote yes tonight.
Okay, Mr. Katz, and then I see no more hands, so maybe we can move this. Yes, Mr. Katz, come on out.
Sherman Casher, we'll drop, we'll make it short. I've lived in this town for 50 years. I know some of the inside things that go on, and I can tell you, I have never once heard of a police officer in this town doing something wrong, something to be dismissed, discharged, or even suspended. I don't know why we're questioning the qualifications of the SRO. You've never questioned the qualifications of the policeman that's out there on the street hired by our chiefs and our commissioners. They watch us every day. They take care of us every day. They take care of our children every day. So if you didn't question them before, why do you question them now? I'm going to end with a short story. Over the years, many people have said to me, why do we have so many policemen in town? We don't have any crime. And my answer is, maybe we don't have crime because we have the policemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Seeing no more hands, I'm going to close discussion on number six and ask the town clerk to read number five.
Agenda item number five. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate from the unappropriated fund balance a sum not to exceed $220,000 for the North Haven, excuse me, Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program to be established by ordinance at Chapter 163 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the elementary schools and middle school in the Town of North Haven.
Is there any discussion on item number five? Seeing no hands. All in favor of calling the question as to item number five, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? A nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We will now, we will now vote on the item. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, it is hereby approved that a sum not to exceed $220,000 shall be appropriated from the unappropriated fund balance for the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program to be established by ordinance at Chapter 163 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the public schools in the Town of North Haven. All in favor of item number five on the agenda signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, note that there, please raise your hands so I can see how many nay there were. Can somebody over there, Mr. Duffy, can you count? Four? Okay, just note that there were four nay. Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Everybody to hold on for, we're going to move to item number six that we already had discussion on. We're just going to take a vote. So can I ask you to just sit still for one more minute? Thank you.
This is the final call of agenda item number six. We will now vote upon this matter. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an ordinance at Chapter 163 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program, Public School Supernumerary, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the public schools in the Town of North Haven.
All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, I hear one nay. We will now vote on the, the motion passes, I'm sorry. We will now vote on the item. All those in favor of item number six on the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, I believe we have three nays. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to, we're going to just give it about two minutes. If everyone could exit as quickly as possible, who's exiting? Because we have four more items on the agenda. Clerk to read item number one of the agenda this evening.
Agenda item number one. To consider and vote upon whether to approve certain requested programs in accordance with the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. This year, the applicants are the Minority Hall Energy Conservation Improvement Program submitted by Lamcraft Fife and Rumcores, and the Churches of North Haven Food Pantry Program submitted by the North Haven Congregational Church.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss item number one? Is there anyone here for item number one? Okay, seeing nobody is here for, to discuss item number one, I'm sorry. We will now vote on the item. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the two applicants for the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act are granted. All in favor of item number one on the agenda signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Town clerk will read item number two of the agenda.
Agenda item number two. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt amendments to the Code of Ethics at Chapter 30 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven.
Is there anyone here who would like to discuss item number two? Anybody? Seeing no hands, we will now vote on the item. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, amendments to the Code of Ethics are hereby approved and adopted at Chapter 30 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven. The amendments to the Code of Ethics at Chapter 30 shall be published in a newspaper, having a circulation in the Town of North Haven, and shall be effective 15 days after publication. All in favor of item number two on the agenda signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Town clerk will now read item number three of the agenda this evening.
Agenda item, agenda item number three. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an ordinance prohibiting waste generated from gas and oil drilling and extraction activities, hydraulic fracturing waste, at Chapter 130 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, to prohibit the use, storage, disposal, sale, acquisition, transfer, handling, treatment, and/or processing of waste from natural gas or oil extraction within the Town of North Haven as set forth therein to protect the health, safety, welfare, and property of the public.
Is there anyone who wishes to discuss this item? Seeing no hands. I'm sorry, would you like to speak to this? Okay, thank you. All in favor? I'm sorry. We will now vote on the item. That in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, an ordinance prohibiting waste generated from gas and oil drilling and extraction activities or hydraulic fracturing waste is hereby approved and adopted at Chapter 130 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to prohibit the use, storage, disposal, sale, acquisition, transfer, handling, treatment, and/or processing of waste from natural gas or oil extraction within the Town of North Haven as set forth therein to protect the health, safety, welfare, and property of the public. The hydraulic fracturing waste ordinance at Chapter 130 shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after publication. All in favor of item number three, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Town clerk will now read item number four of the agenda this evening.
The fourth and final agenda item. Agenda item number four. To consider and vote upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to adopt an illicit discharge and connection to stormwater drainage systems ordinance at Chapter 133 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish the methods for controlling the introduction of the Town of North Haven to establish the methods for controlling the introduction of pollutants into the municipal separate storm sewer system to comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Process.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to this discussion tonight?
Ms. Domgartner, 59 Garfield Avenue. I just have a quick question. How does water from sump pumps, is that affected by this?
Um, let's see.
Does groundwater?
Ms. Sadowski, Public Works, can answer that question.
Sadowski, Director of Public Works. Groundwater is not a part of the ordinance, it's not considered a pollutant, not part of the connection of that system.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sadowski. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Anyone? Seeing no hands? We will now vote on the item. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, an illicit discharge in connection to storm water drainage systems ordinance is hereby approved and adopted at Chapter 133 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish the method for controlling the introduction of pollutants into the municipal separate storm sewer system to comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Process. The illicit discharge ordinance at Chapter 133 shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven, and shall be effective 15 days after publication. All in favor of item number four on the agenda, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. This concludes all items on the special town meeting notice. There being no further lawful business before the special town meeting tonight, I hereby declare the meeting adjourned. Minutes of the meeting will be available, as well as a public hearing beforehand by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.